For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening, welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting, September 16th, 2013. Call the roll, please.
Island?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noah?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Walagora?
Here. Rise for the pledge, please.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes from regular session, September 13th, 2013. Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items shall be allowed five minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. If you do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. I'm going to ask if it's not too inappropriate, Ms. Schultz, if you wouldn't mind going first because your topic might be significantly different than anyone else's. That way we won't have a chopping back and forth between topics, please.
She's going first anyway, I think.
Thank you. Right up here?
Yes.
This is the part where I'm just going to give a quick opening statement. I'm here basically representing Mr. Gildner. He's the manager for his family's business, which locally operates as a concrete production and masonry building supply store. His store sells products, retail, wholesale, to contractors as well as to individuals. At issue tonight is the city's truck route ordinance and the recent enforcement that's been happening with respect to the truck route. Mr. Gildner's family store has been in Alpena since 1993, and the current route has been in place since 2001. During development of the current ordinance, Mr. Gildner had conversations with city officials back then, which led him to believe that he was currently operating within the truck route ordinance. Now however, enforcement is happening that is not consistent with his understanding of the truck route ordinance. Mr. Gildner, along with several other local businesses, are now confused as to how the ordinance will apply to his business as well as to others, and essentially request the council's assistance to help the local business establishment, particularly some of those on the north side, to work within the city's regulations. Also, with recent enforcement, it has come to my attention that the city ordinance prescribes a harsher penalty than does the Michigan statute. Basically, the city's ordinance is a misdemeanor per violation, whereas the state statute is an infraction. So, the first point is to open up discussion as to what the truck route really means. And the second point is to basically present to the city council that the ordinance is currently written and requires Mr. Gildner and his business to operate, whereas he's on the north side, he's on the primary truck route line, that if he wants to get to the other side of the city, necessarily in the township, he has to go, he and his employees have to use their truck and go 10 miles out of the city to Hamilton to come back in the city to get somewhere on the south side. That adds $40 of loan in fuel to each round trip, just whereas he could use a three to four block city street, Long Lake Avenue in particular, that many trucks in the city use currently. So, it appears that there is somewhat unequal treatment as to whether or not he and his customers are forced to travel around the city in order not to use city street to do business. And then third, the current enforcement appears to be selective or preferential, however you look at it. There's another same type of business in Alpena, LNS Concrete in particular, and not to point fingers at them, but just to show the council that there is a difference of how that business is being treated than the north side business. And, for example, LNS frequently travels to Lafarge. LNS is located on 11th Street, which is on a primary truck route, and they can go to the south, or to the north side, to Lafarge, and apparently they have a permanent waiver of the ordinance so that they can use whatever city street that they want to, to get to Lafarge and back, or to do whatever business that they are doing on the north side. So, it appears to be unvetted description allowable to LNS and not allowable to other city businesses. And we're not here asking that their permanent waiver be taken away by any means, but that it be applied fairly to other businesses, that they be allowed, other businesses be allowed to seek this permanent waiver. Also, for example, LNS routinely drives its bulkers, which is a commercial vehicle that maxes out at 160,000 pounds, or 80 tons loaded. Mr. Gildner's truck, his biggest one, maxes out at about half of that. So, if we're talking that the city ordinance should require restrictions on a city route, there is no way for a city business to understand, is it a tonnage issue, is it a type of truck issue, or what is the issue, or are all trucks, commercial vehicles, as written in the city ordinance, currently prohibited? And if you see the signage around the city versus the signage that the state has, it's clearly different. The state prescribes weight limits, the city prescribes a truck, which looks like a bread truck, with a big X on it. It doesn't help the local businesses try to understand what is allowed and what is not. Anyway, we are here to put this issue before the city council, to have fair treatment applied to all businesses, and to ask that the city be proactive in having businesses here in Alpena. Mr. Gildner wants the three employees that his company employs to continue doing business. He wants to help Alpena's economy grow, and he seeks the city council's help in doing just that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a short note today. This is from Mike Tennant. She told me that her 80-year-old mother moved in with her because of Alzheimer's disease. Mike came in to do the inspection, and Mike said she had to have a lock on the bathroom door. The tenant told Mike that about her mother's condition and that a lock on the bathroom door would be unsafe for her mother. Mike said it didn't matter, the rules are, all bathroom doors must have locks. He also said after he left, she could remove the lock. Does this make any sense? And then I'll just stop right there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. There are no announcements this evening. We're up? We do? Oh, we got another? Sorry, Angie.
Angie Siva, 635 River Street. I am just asking a follow-up question to previous issues from before. I am checking, in the past, there was an attempt to change the zoning to some waterfront development from Clem's to the bridge near the post office. And I'm checking, has there been anything that has been attempted to be changed, or has been changed, since we did have that ruling that it would not be changed? In the master plan, I know there were propositions, and I'm checking to see, to stand top of this and make sure, in front of God and everyone, that we are not slipping anything through the cracks here that I am missing, and to make sure that's all, that I will be informed if there are any attempts to make those changes, so we can fight that directly.
Who is?
Jim Spleet passed away, but his wife and we, as in the neighbors, on 6 River Street, hoping not to have our zoning change and not having our tax bills changed, and we had gone ahead and we had choices, we had the decision in our favor at that time. I just want to make sure with the new master plan that there's nothing that I have missed. I have copies of both, and I've read them, but they're quite lengthy, and I just was concerned. If so, can I be informed directly?
Angie, I'm sure Greg Sundin hasn't answered it yet.
Okay.
So, we can make sure that he gets with you and let you know if there's any changes.
Okay.
I can answer right now.
Don Gillett, 22th Street. Angie, that last meeting you were at, when you guys got what you wanted, that's exactly how it is right now, and there is, there are no efforts going on to try to redone that any further than what we discussed a couple of years ago. And, if there in the future ever will be, and all people within 300 feet of all the affected properties will have to be notified by mail, it will be posted, there's a very specific legal requirement, or to inform the residents, so that you don't just wake up one day and your zoning got changed.
Okay, because I had, it came up in a discussion when I attended the other meeting, when they were talking about the waterfront development with the river proposal, and I asked, are you putting water pumps in to pump the river water out? And he said, oh, that's not part of the plan, and things are changing along the waterfront in the near future. So then I thought, maybe I missed something at another meeting, and, you know?
Things are constantly changing along the waterfront in an effort to improve it, but not in an effort to redone it.
Okay, very good.
You'd be informed of that.
And then, he didn't know about that other, about water pumps coming directly from the water, even to see, make sure that was included in the plan, because it would be included in the money, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for clearing that up, Anna. Okay, and you don't have any announcements?
Do not.
Consent agenda this evening, bills to be allowed in the amount of $776,465.71. B, one mayor-all appointment to the Downtown Development Association, DDA, for a four-year term, expiring 9/16/2017, is Megan Ritchie. C, approval of a budget amendment for resurfacing of Henry and Wilson Streets in the amount of $24,300.
New way of presenting consent agenda is presented.
Second.
You be, right?
Yep. You seem like a rake.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Island?
Yes.
Proclamation this evening. Whereas October 2013 is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is a platform for educating women about the importance of early detection of breast cancer through mammography and other methods, and whereas an estimated 232,340 new cases of breast cancer will be diagnosed in American women during 2013, and about 39,620 women will die this year from the disease. And whereas detection of breast cancer at an early stage greatly improves the chances for successful treatment and survival, and whereas October 18th, 2013 is National Mammography Day, and women are encouraged to make a mammography appointment and a renewed commitment to following the recommended screening guidelines. And whereas the Zonta Club of Alpena remains dedicated to educating and empowering women to take charge of their own breast health, and have organized the Seventh Annual Zonta Walks for Women 5K Run on October 5th, 2013, at the Fletcher Brewing Company. Now therefore, I, Matthew G. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Alpena, and urge all citizens to support this cause. Signed by myself today. A lot of Zantas here, if you'd like to come up.
I would like to thank city council again for allowing us the opportunity to use the Heritage Trail and the bypath for our annual walk. We hope someday that we will never have to do this, and there will be a cure for breast cancer, but in the meantime, we continue to continue our efforts. Over the last six years, we've raised $132,000 and provided 1,798 mammograms to women in the Alpena area. I know for a fact we've saved a life, and so thank you for your support.
(Applause).
I'm the chair, Marie Gilmet-Douli. Marie is a 10-month cancer survivor.
Communications and petitions, we have the Alpena Rotary Club Bike Path signage. Rich Selinger.
Jerry Tracy, representing the Alpena Rotary Club, has approached the interior staff regarding enhancing the signage markings along the city bike path system. Our discussion with Jerry Tracy, multi-use facet of the trail system could be enhanced by installing mileage markers and signage along the trail system. This would allow those that are using it for all recreation activities to identify where they are at on the system, how far they have gone, how far to return to where they started from, or how far to a point of interest or activity. They have proposed to initiate all mileage markings and measurements from the duck park. The eventual plan would be to have small kiosks installed in each of the trailhead locations, Duck Park, SciTech Park, Starlight Beach, Woodward Trailhead, and others as deemed appropriate, to identify the entire trail system, the individual loop, distances, and amenities along the trail system. After our initial meeting, I drew up a basic post-top mount sign and obtained quotes to have these fabricated. The sign would have a UV plexiglass face, and could be changed out with new printed versions if things changed or the quality starts to degrade. The Alpena Rotary Club has committed the resources necessary to have these sign mounts fabricated, poles installed, and the signs placed on the posts. Another component of the project, and one that would require city council approval, is potentially renaming the trail system from bypath to some other name. They would also like to have the individual loops within and along the path named, for clarity, reflect on the loop itself. Any renaming of the system would be brought back to the city council via concurrence and approval. Jerry Tracy is in the audience tonight, and I'm sure he has a few comments about this.
Thanks, Chris. Again, Jerry Tracy, representing the Alpena Rotary Club. Certainly, the club's interest in this project is strictly enhancement of an already good project. The idea here would be to make sure that we're using it for all the facets, whether it's walking, or running, or biking, or whatever, and some of the things that we've heard and we're bringing to you as a community service project for the club would be the things of marking the trails on half-mile markers and mile markers, along with marking it for points of interest. The maps that you've currently got have some of that in it, but this would be, you know, "you are here" type signs that you'd see on ski trails, for instance, and so on, but the idea of this is strictly enhancing an already good project, making it more user-friendly, and really just increasing the use of it. So, if you have any questions for me at this point?
I have some questions, just maybe for both of you. Not so much in the signage, because the signage is good. I always get a little confused with some of the numbers that are already there, because I don't know what they really represent. I've gone a mile from some destination, and you have, there are some white posts that have two numbers on them, one obviously represents how far you've come, and the other one represents how far you've gone. So there is a little bit of confusion to even myself, up to what those numbers represent. Will these, do you know what those, do you know those white posts that I'm talking about? Do these, will these change out those, or will they be in addition to those posts that are already out there?
The white post that you see out there was a Eagle Scout project that was done by an Eagle Scout here in Alpena, Steve, probably about three, kind of three years, three or four years ago. And there is, there are maps associated with those.
Okay.
And that was a project he elected to do. The real thing is, I think we need to re-mile mark the entire system. You know, back years ago, we went through, we painted mileage markers on the bike path itself, and for lack of a better starting point, we started back here at the corner of Water and Harbor Drive, started there and numbered the bike path, mostly just so that there was some identification. If you started at 3.5 or 3, and you ran to 5, you'd gone two miles. What they want to do is take, what Rory wants to do is take and enhance that and improve on that, within individual loops within the entire system. You know, I think, yes, they would probably, if we're going to do this comprehensive, because the comprehensive plan would replace those ones that were put in three years ago.
Because that was, I guess, part of my concern as to whether that, I assume it was a young, oh, you said Boy Scouts, so I assume it's a young man did that project, and, you know, how that can just, whether you are aware of that, or whether you can encompass that into what you have, or if it has to be replaced?
Certainly, we had, we have that knowledge, we have the knowledge of that when we actually had a meeting back in July to just discuss that. Our interest is not in taking something away from the Eagle Scout, who actually prepared that. If we can incorporate that into this, there'd be no problem with that. The point of this is to really enhance it, so that if somebody's out there, they know where they're at, how far they've went, where it is that they can head to, just for a destination point.
Yeah, I think, I think the concept and the idea is great, and I obviously applaud the Rotary for taking that on. My other, I guess, question, just briefly, is that it's come up before to rename the bypath. I remember it coming up before I was elected, and I remember sitting there and supporting that, because other communities and grant writing and things that don't understand what BI-path means, some of the inventors of the path obviously know what it means, but the rest of the community probably doesn't. So, I'm in favor of changing that, I don't know. So what you would do is, some group, whether it be Rotary, would come back with presentations, and we would just approve that, or?
We have, we have many members of the club. One idea that we had is to lay it out to the club, to come up with many ideas for the loops and for the path itself, and then come back to you with name options. Certainly, the idea is not to, with some general rules, it can't be individuals' names and so on, but to come back with something that's maybe branding, something that really is more up-to-date. But the idea is to make it something that is attractive to individuals who are going to use the path, who are coming to town, something that would grab people's interest.
Right. And I, yeah, I think that's fine. I don't know, I guess my only question as devil's advocate is whether the council would have an issue with only one group having the opportunity to come up with names that we would have to select from, or whether we should somehow, maybe even, if you were, if you're, if the club was the focal point, and anybody else had been sitting on a good idea for 10 years, if they would have the opportunity, as non-Rotarians, to present a name to you?
Absolutely. This isn't about Rotary. This is really not about us taking something and, you know, getting our mark on it. It's something that we want to give the committee with, and get the best name on it, wherever the names come from.
Okay.
And you will publish the way people can submit the names to you?
Well, we'd have to talk about that. This is something kind of new in the thinking, but I would think so.
And you might even use the, I'm sorry, you might even use the, what do we call the?
Branding.
What do we call that, as a branding committee? You might even use that as a?
That'd be a good place to start, with the branding group, and we can give you a contact with that.
Good.
Jerry, would we be able to see, as an example of the signage, before you move forward?
Absolutely, and I think what we'd be doing is, we're looking at ways to keep it, from a maintenance standpoint, pretty much maintenance-free. We've looked at Stevens fabrication from a stainless steel platform for the mounts on 4x4s, things that would keep it simple for whoever's going to maintain it, be it a city maintenance or whatever. And then the signage would be something that could be replaced, be the paper that was slipped in behind the plexiglass. But if you, the idea, at least the initial idea, if you've been on the trails of Chippewa, or if you've been on the trails of Norway Ridge, and you see the signs, "You are here", something along that idea that would give someone a good idea of how far they've went, so that they don't feel like they're lost. Probably especially important on the bike path, where it comes from a seven-foot section to a five-foot section where we're running on sidewalk, and people get confused at corners. And I think, trying to keep the confusion to a minimum, whether it's the Old Town Loop, or whether it's around the sanctuary, or just wherever, so.
Sam?
Pardon me, I'm not clear about the reason for the need to rename it. Is it because not many people know what the bypath is, or the bypath is not a sexy enough name?
It isn't really any of those things, it's just something that came up as an idea, maybe because people don't know what bypath is, maybe it's just the idea of kind of just getting it reinstituted, but it, no, there's nothing magic about renaming it, Mr. G. It's just a, just an idea that was had, and the idea of getting it out front, getting it at a point where people know it's there, because very few people know that maybe a starting point is downtown here, trying to get it at a more focal point, so.
Yeah, and if you put yourself in a visitor's position, and they come in and they see that it's somewhere on a map or something, that it's a bypath, and they have to immediately wonder whether they can walk, or walk their dog, or rollerblade, because it's a bypath, bike, I don't know.
Exactly.
This is likely to be a multi-year project for the club, and we're not afraid of that. We've looked to, and we budgeted pretty significant dollars for the current project, and we're willing to do that going forward. The idea is, we're interested only in doing projects that we think are worthwhile, community service projects, and we believe this is one of them, so.
You're certainly enhancing, and I think you mentioned that specifically, you're enhancing an already positive attribute. I do like the idea of you guys having specific loops and naming those, and so I'd love to see you go forward with a little bit of input from the community.
One of the ideas on the loops would actually probably require color coding, because some of the loops actually have certain points that they cross or intersect. It's true on Washington, where you've got maybe a loop that would go to the south, and one that's moving the opposite direction. So, in certain areas there, in order to mark it properly, it would probably require some type of color coding at the kiosk points, and maybe even along the way, but.
That's very appropriate. I know in my family, we all, we have a, we've named it ourselves. We have certain names for certain loops, certain names for certain routes, you know, we'll take this route at a certain time, and so I'm sure, if we feel the need to name it for each other, I'm sure people coming into town are confused.
Yeah, it's, like any other trail system, I think, the colors and stuff, that all makes sense. I mean, there's a lot of business currently where people are going on tours in different communities, and will hit different regions where they'll tour, and hit certain bike areas, and then move on to next city and hit different paths, so I think this is a great idea as well. Appreciate your consideration.
Okay, yeah, and as far as action goes, I think we should, we should kind of take care of an action to allow the Rotary Club to?
Pursue.
To pursue, thanks, and changing the name of the thing, and going into the, and finishing up the rest of the project with, obviously with Rich's counsel and some.
And then you want it brought back before they start? You want to see the signs and stuff?
Yes.
Some example, just to make sure we're not way off of where the?
Okay, that's good. So, I would make the motion.
Does that sound right? You all set?
Yes. Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Island?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Next on the agenda, Kimberly Schultz was kind enough to allow us to know in advance that she was coming, so we put her subject, her topic on the agenda itself. I'm aware that we have some issues with the enforcement of our truck route. I do want to be a bit careful as far as where our discussion leads, just due to some pending Based on what she has presented to us, I don't, I don't know how much discussion we would need. I would like to present that we wait on any major action on that until Greg gets back. The original ordinance was kind of constructed by, from what I understand, by, by the mayor that was here at the time, the city manager that was here at the time, the city engineer, and I think it was, the attorney was Bill at the time. But I would like to get the, the, those same people off of vacation and back. So if council would want to direct staff to do that on the, obviously after the return of, of our city manager, I really, I'm not comfortable taking a lot of action on the enforcement and the, and the interpretation of the ordinance until, until Greg gets back. I just, I don't know that we really need to do that. If there's any impending, when, what day does he get back? Is it next Monday?
Yes.
So the minute he gets back?
Yeah. I'd like to table it for now.
Um, I don't know if we need to table it or if somebody wants to present a motion that we take it up because he will be back before our next meeting if we want to, or wherever council wants to go with that. By tabling, I don't want anybody to get the interpretation that we're, that we're not going to, you know, take some type of, at least take a look, sit down and take a look at it. So if you feel more comfortable giving an, an actual action by vote that we do or just knowing that we are going to when he gets back. Oh, and I guess the last person would be the police chief is also, would be involved in that, so. I don't know if a motion is necessary or?
Well, just if I could make just a couple comments, I don't think it'd be appropriate for council to deliberate on the issue about whether Mr. Gildner or another case is pending, Mr. Marleski, whether they're in violation of the ordinance or not. I don't, I don't think that'd be appropriate. That's for the court to decide. And Mr. Marleski's case is under advisement. Mr. Gildner's case will be coming to court shortly. I did speak to Kim and advised her that I thought the concerns that were being raised were something that should be brought to council and should be brought to council, asking council for some type of staff report, not only the history of the ordinance, but the amendments that have happened to it. There are certainly some concern, not only by Mr. Gildner, but by Mr. Marleski about, and I don't want to get into issues about selective enforcement because I don't think that's an issue, but that's, you know, that's for another day or to be decided somewhere down the road by the court. But the issues that were raised regarding what does doing business mean and what options do business owners have in terms of getting off the route? The waiver procedure, there is a waiver procedure where the city manager and/or city engineer can grant a business a waiver and the truck route designates that it has to be the most direct route on and off, or on and off the truck route, the most direct route from the business. So there are some concerns that have been raised that I think are, are fair concerns to raise. One of the problems is that the individuals that were involved when the ordinance was amended in 2001 aren't currently in existence in their same roles. So some things have been addressed with me as the attorney that, hey, this guy said this, this guy said that. I, I told these folks in fairness to that process, I will investigate with former city manager Taylor to find out if he did express those things to not only Mr. Gildner, but to Mr. Marleski. And if he does, then those are things I think council would need to consider moving forward. And that's got nothing to do with whether either one of these individuals is in violation of the ordinance or not. That's, that's a legal determination. That's not a determination for council. But if council wants to address their concerns and wants a staff report, that would make sense for somebody to motion that it be referred to staff and come back sometime in the near future to address that. I'm not sure if Greg will be prepared to address it at the next meeting because I'm sure he's got a stack of, of stuff waiting for him. But somewhere in the near future, it should probably be addressed, just in fairness to the business owners and fairness to, I think in fairness to Joel and, and his guys as well, because there have been some, essentially some allegations made against them that they're somehow enforcing it different than was enforced in the past. And I think it's fair for Chief Jack to give his input on that issue as well and to do it in a non-confrontational manner, you know? And I think a staff report would do that, would lay some issues out. I have no idea off the top of my head how many truck route tickets have even been written. So I don't, I don't know if there's been five of them or 10 of them or, I don't recall there being that many of them. So from that perspective, I know it's not a ticket that's written every day, but how many there are, just don't know off the top of my head. I wouldn't be able to give you a, a fair estimate of how many are up there. But I think once again, you know, in fairness to Mr. Marleski and Mr. Gildner, I think their concern should be addressed. But ultimately whether there's a violation is going to be addressed in court, not, not by council.
And that would be, I just checked the calendar real quick, is October 21st is our second meeting in October and I think it's probably wise to, because there's only like six days from the time that Greg gets back into town to the first meeting in October, so if I looked at, am I right? So it's an odd month because it starts on a Tuesday. The month starts on a Tuesday, so it would be, it would be two weeks from when he got in. I don't know, what do you, how do you feel for what he's got going? Does it seem reasonable that we would be able to put something together for the 7th or would you think the 21st would be better?
I would give him the 21st. He's going to be.
Let's go with the 21st because we're talking about getting probably five or six people's schedules coordinated for a meeting and so if you guys are okay with that.
Yep. Who would make that motion?
Can we clarify real quick? What you're looking to? Yeah, I think there was probably three issues were brought up and one is just the clarity of the ordinance, you know, whether it's clear, it's not clear, it's confusing, it isn't complete, as Ms. Schultz pointed out. And secondly, if it's been enforced fairly, I think we can probably look at the amount of citations, I guess. And maybe lastly, what that waiver process is, who has a waiver, who doesn't have a waiver? Anything else you guys think they should look into?
I think those three points are all taken.
And the staff report should encompass all the heads of staff like Joel and Greg and everybody who, who has anything to do with it, so that we have a clear understanding from all points.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think obviously Chief Jack should address it, Rich should address it.
Right.
City manager, somebody should address it. So those are probably the three main guys that.
Would that give you enough time to investigate past city employees?
Yeah, there, there's obviously been discussion about it that has not included bringing it to council as an agenda item. And there was some, in fact, Mr. Marleski, through his attorney, presented me some information from a previous meeting back in 2001 when it got amended. And it was essentially a memo from city manager Baklarsky asking Mr. Solomon to look at it. So there was, there was discussions that went back that far and meetings that went back that far. That Taylor was involved with those as a public safety director. But, you know, we don't have that same group of folks around and don't have, there's certainly a difference in historical perspective as to what the intent was and how it was to be enforced. You know, like I say, ultimately, you know, the court will make a decision about whether our position, my position on behalf of the city is, is valid or not. But I think there are still concerns regardless of what the court does. I think there are concerns that these folks want addressed and, and find out whether their council will consider some amendment to it. And so I think all those folks should be involved with taking a look at it.
We, we certainly want it to be clear. We want it to be fair.
Yes.
Regardless of outcome of the court.
Did you, did you have some comments?
Yes, actually I did, I'm sorry. Basically, what I brought with me are three handouts that I think would be important for council review. One is the actual ordinance. The other handout is the truck route, as you can find on the city's website, and we color coded it to match the city's website. And then also the city ordinance, we color coded with the truck route as well. So when you are discussing it, we feel it's important that you have these three different, you know, handouts to look at. And also, if you would note that on the city's truck route, there is a weight limit that the truck route actually has, but it doesn't, you know, have it in the ordinance and it doesn't have it on the sign. And I know that Mr. Gildner has been in conversations with other local businesses in and, in it, in and around the north side and the south side of Alpena. And he gets many various interpretations from all these business owners. So I think it is incumbent upon you, a city council, to reach out to the city businesses and their owners and their managers and find out, you know, what exactly it is that they need, what exactly it is can the city help with that? And the city of Alpena should really try to make the businesses that are located in it able to do business in an economic way. These are struggling times. Again, you know, for Mr. Gildner and his employees to make every truck that goes out of their yard go 10 miles out, come 10 miles back in is just economically a hardship on their business. I'm sure it is on others. And that's all. Thank you.
Great. And you had those?
Would you like to hand out?
Please.
There's three there. All right.
Yeah, we certainly appreciate you coming and addressing the issue, Mr. Gildner and Ms. Schultz and, and Mr. Marleski and anyone else. That's how things get done. So if someone would like to make that motion, that.
Mike me.
I did, did he? Yes.
I'll second.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Eiler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Okay. Next on the agenda is Duffy Gorski, the Blair Street Storm Drain.
I'm Duffy Gorski and I reside at 746 State Avenue, Alpena, Michigan. And I have some videos and pictures of a situation that I think our city needs to be aware of for several reasons. One is it may be an environmental issue to start off with that will require changes to be made. Two is that it definitely affects all our beach area and the bay and the river. And I'm sure that that affects our tourism and that whole financial structure from fishing to the glass bottom boat, hotels, restaurants, salons over. And basically I'm just here to make you aware of it and show you what I've seen. I always thought that the black guck pollution that I see on the beaches and along the shore and on our bay bottom came from the old logging days and it was a stratus of sawdust and guck washing out of the lake bottom from those days. But I've become aware after living on the lake that it's coming out of our storm drains. And what I wanted to show you is the pictures of what I've taken on June 27th. We had a torrential rainstorm and part of the effects I'm going to show you have already been there from the spring runoff and that's when it's the worst. But throughout the year, what happens is all the runoff from our parking lots, our roofs, all surfaces in this city go into our storm drains and they flush all the road debris, which is churned up over the year by the tires of the car, which include oil, antifreeze, you name it, tire wear, branches, plastic, all this stuff goes into our lake and our river. The main drain is Blair Street. I'm not sure how big that culvert is, but I believe it's about a four footer. And there are, to my knowledge, somewhere between nine and 14 storm drains from the mouth of the river to the Nine Street Dam. I don't know how many are above, but all this flushes into our lake. And if I can get this thing hooked up and working, I will give you some videos and then that's my presentation.
If you're with me, I'm having some trouble finding it. I'm not very good at computers.
May I tell a joke?
Sure.
Just a moment of time. Sorry tomorrow, we'll make the news.
If I may speak, Mr. Gorski showed this to our Air and Water Quality Committee in our August meeting.
If I may speak, Mr. Gorsky showed this to our Air and Water Quality Committee in our August meeting. And it's just, it's disgusting, it's tragic. And it moves out a quarter of a mile, then comes back in and keeps recirculating. And I asked him to come and show this video to us tonight, and hopefully get it. But those who saw it on that Thursday afternoon, you know, it's, they say a picture is worth a thousand words. Here we go.
Dave, is there some reason for that that we can help?
Pardon?
Sorry, because he hasn't left our system. Do you want to, Councilman Sexton, do you want to just skip down to D? Do you want, we can discuss the lights on the bike path?
If he wants to kind of look around, that's what he can do, sure.
So we're, all we're going to do right now is just skip down to the next item on the agenda, and we'll discuss the lights on the bike path between the cemetery and Washington Park, and then we'll come back to Mr. Gorsky.
It's probably relatively good timing, as we talked about the bike path this evening and what a jewel that is. A young lady I worked with kind of brought this to my attention, and I went and checked it out myself. But on the bike path between Bagley and Washington Park, so it goes along the cemetery all through there, we don't have any light at all. And she's a biker and bikes that route at night. And I was a little concerned, you know, for her safety, and just kind of asked me, hey, why isn't there any lights here? And, you know, I didn't have a very good answer for her. I went through there at night myself. You know, it's a very narrow stretch. In fact, there was one alternative to put the snowmobile route there, we didn't do it because there's not much room. Between the cemetery and the road is pretty narrow. Yeah, if you come through there at night, bikes in different directions, if you get tangled up, you could easily come into the road. Cemetery is probably a good place to hang out if you're a predator as well. You can certainly hop off that path and people wouldn't see it coming. So I did ask Rich to maybe look into the price of putting a couple of lights through there. Really, it's just a safety concern, because it is really dark through that stretch of light, or that stretch of the bike path. So Rich would like to talk about the cost of it, I guess he can holler and see if we're interested in that at all or not.
The biggest issue that we've got is right now, there is no wiring in conduit along that stretch. It's just been one of those projects that is in the, I won't say wish list, but it's been out there as a target project for a lot of years. I mean, there was discussion about having the conduit and the wire in there with the ability to light those trees along in there during Christmas, to put some Christmas lights on there. So volunteers were actually looking at that. So, I mean, we don't have those facilities in place. We would have, you know, I'd have to go back and put an estimate together to figure out what it's going to cost to run the conduit the full length of there, put in the lights, put in the bases, et cetera. But a light alone, just one of our pedestrian lights, between twelve and fourteen hundred dollars, depending on, you know, how many you buy. That's just for the light alone. Then you've probably got five hundred dollars for the base. Then you've got the money to have it installed, providing the conduits there. So a light, you know, you're looking two thousand dollars easily per light, if everything else, all the other structures in place. You know, put conduit in, you're probably five, six dollars a foot, and that's a pretty good stretch in there. You know, I told Sean, sent him an email and said, you know, there may be some other options. There may be solar lights, some solar ballards that we can put in there as an interim step. And I have not, you know, I didn't get a chance to get all the prices, but I know those are slightly cheaper, because they're shorter, they're not as massive. It is something that if council's interested in, we can put numbers together on the various options, put it in the capital improvement plan, and try to fund a portion of it during the next budget cycle. Right now, we absolutely have no money to do anything in there. I've got five thousand dollars, I think, I think it's twelve thousand dollars for lights, and I can't buy enough lights to replace what I've got out there right now that are down. So that's kind of where we're at. But it is, it is a project that has been on the books for a lot of years, as a project.
And this is, this is from, does it take park through the woods up to the cemetery? Is that what we're talking about, the wooded area?
In the cemetery to Eleventh Avenue.
Oh, along the river there?
Yeah, along the river.
Okay, I thought we were talking about in the woods, but we're talking about along the river.
Just like right along the water.
Yeah, okay, yeah, it's pretty dark, I think. Yeah, I don't know, does something like that fall to the description of any of the, like, current committees that we have? Like Parks and Recreation?
Parks and Rec, that has been a project that they've identified.
Has it?
It is in our master rec plan.
Other than identifying the darkness, have they identified any creative ways of lighting that? Like solar, or wind, or conduit, or, you know, or electricity, or any... I mean, have there been any kind of, can this go back to them as a committee to come up with, you know, to just kind of knock their heads around, see what's available out there?
This was third point.
Might be surprised. Just to take a burden off of you and your particular engineering staff, if we have a committee that's Parks and Recreation Committee, we might, I think we might ask them to kind of review that and see if they can't come up with any ideas. Does it sound reasonable? I've never been to a Parks and Recreation Committee meeting, so I'm not really sure what their task for. I apologize for that, I don't know what that is.
I don't know that there is one. Anybody on it?
Yeah, Parks and Rec, I'm in charge of the Parks and Rec.
I'll take a load off.
Yeah, I relieved you of that as the engineer, and put it on you as chairman of the Parks and Recreation.
No, it basically, you know, they are involved with the master rec plan in identifying those types of things. And the lighting of that section has been a topic of discussion at a number of our meetings. And so it is something that we need to look at.
I think it's worth at least getting some numbers together, either on the solar options and find out how many lights we've taken exactly. It's hard to even guess, we can all say that we really want to light that area up, which I do, but I think we need to have the numbers in front of us, what the true cost is going to be before we can even discuss.
Yeah, for sure. And there's a lot of different alternative, alternative lighting options out there that we've kind of seen, so. If you want to put something together and bring it back to us, but cost-wise, I don't know if it's anything we can add anytime soon.
I'll have the rec board.
You have the rec board, I think I have to give it to them. Where are we at, Duffy?
Well, I have to apologize because the resolution of my computer and your monitors are not compatible. I can show you a real quick clip, standing in front of you with my monitor, and I think you'll get a good idea what's going on.
Can you? I mean, can you put it right where that pitcher, pitcher water is maybe, or something? I'd hate for you not to present something that's that vital for the conversation.
As far as well, you still see this.
Now that Sam has brought it to you.
The mayor's got glasses, I don't know.
Yeah, but it's just right in front of me, I can see something.
This is Blair Street Dock.
Right.
And this is what's coming out of it. And then in the next video, I mean, we don't have to sit and watch this whole thing, I can stop it and go to the next video. I walked down the beach to show you the residue that is on the beach before this is even coming out. This stuff here is new and it's coming out. And this, every time it rains, and remember, there's between nine and fourteen smaller drains, and some is big, between the mouth of the river and the dam. And when you go down to the river, you look at the river, it's like chocolate milk, covered with all this garbage, the leaves, cigarette butts, pieces of plastic, pop bottles, you name it, it's just coming out of there. On top of your road debris from your vehicles, such as gas, oil, antifreeze, wired tire wear and all that stuff. I'm going to stop this one, and I'm going to... Believe this one here is the one, yes. This is where I walked away from, now it doesn't look bad here. And for some reason, this one corner here is somewhat clean all the time. But on the other side of the dock, it's horrible. And now I'm walking down towards my house, and I'm actually behind one of the doctor's houses, not quite down to Tony yet, Skiba. But this is what's laying on the beach, and wait till I get close to it, this stuff is this deep.
What was that to the right, just now, Blair Street Pier?
Yeah, I turned and I'm walking north, I'm walking north along the beach. And then I can show you, I've got pictures of the drains up the river and stuff, half of them, how much is coming out of there. This is what sits on your beach. I've got a can of it. I've been told before that this, by the DNR and other people, that this is algae bloom. I'm going, yeah, it bloomed on our streets. My concern is, first and foremost, is EPA. I can't imagine that they start seeing what's going on here, that they're not going to raise an issue with the city. The other thing...
They're not watching tonight.
Right, good. But the other thing is, is that about five, six years ago, maybe a little longer than that, Carl Levin and the Lake surrounding representatives got together and they got a package for Great Lakes cleanup. I've been trying to get ahold of them and get some more information on that, and I haven't received any information. But I know that there was supposed to be like two hundred and some odd million dollars out there to help clean up the Great Lakes. And not only that, if there are grants and stuff available for it, it would put some people to work for a while restructuring this system. I know that the system, at one time, from what I've talked to people that have worked in a city, in a city garage and that, that the storm sewers used to go through our water plant, the sewage treatment plant. And back somewhere between seventy-two and eighty-seven, somewhere in there, they were allowed to take it off, because they were, it was just cost prohibitive to treat that much stuff. But I can tell you this, that there are systems out there to clean it. When you read up on Lake Tahoe back in the late sixties, I believe, they put a system in there, you better not get caught spitting within a half mile of that lake. I mean, they're that touchy about Lake Tahoe. But the water they put back in from all their sanitation and their streets and everything else is cleaner than the water in the lake. And I'm just, like I said, I'm bringing this information forward. Now we know, we know where it comes from. I always thought it was soft, and quite honestly, it's a little soft. And then I realized it came and left with the rain. I thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cassie. The photographs that you mentioned, do we have access to those? Does staff have those, or?
I can, I can get them to them, I can, whoever needs them, I can put them on a stick or get them on a stick.
You went to the extent of taking them in the video, and if you don't mind, put it on a stick and maybe just get, taking it to engineering?
Right.
If it's going to be useful, I'd like to see them.
Yeah, let's see the rest of what you had.
Yeah.
But I think probably the engineering department would be a good resource, and then if somebody wanted to go up there and take a look, we could just stop at our convenience and there, if that sounds reasonable.
Now Duffy, just to summarize real quick, because this is something people ask about all the time, about the beaches. And you're right, algae blooms typically are the first answer. So your contention that the storm sewers are just washing into the, taking that debris off the roads and washing it out there?
Rich?
Yeah, Rich and Mike can answer some questions too.
Do you have a follow-up on that, I think Karen said? Is that a different topic?
No, if you have any questions, Rich and Mike can help.
Oh, well, I didn't...
Sam does.
Sam does, and I do, but I don't know whether it's, there's a report coming up on the started beach that is not even close, is it?
We'll never even do it.
Okay. Rich, if you want to come up, I guess, got to spend some questions.
The question I wanted answered, I don't know if it's a Mike question or a Rich question or both, is obviously there, at one point, our storm sewers were connected to the water treatment plant, apparently, and now they're not. And I'm sure all over the country, some are and some aren't. And what are the arguments for conjoining them, and what are the arguments for splitting them apart? Well, I think, and Mike, you can jump in here any time, but I think the big thing was that there was no way that you were going to be able to design wastewater treatment facilities that are designed to handle the sewage flow and then a storm event. So what happens? We have them right out here. There's these two concrete vaults right out here, where sanitary sewer overflows. So that when the system couldn't handle it because of all the storm water, it would bypass right to the river. And that's what, that's what the EPA did not want to have happening. They didn't want raw sewage bypasses happening. So they funded the separation, sanitary and storm, getting the storm sewer out of the sanitary sewer system. So that communities like Alpena, like every other community that has a treatment facility, did not have to oversize their plant, oversize their capabilities to be able to handle those rain events. Because quite frankly, no community could afford it for that type of an event. So they did, and it was in the seventies. We went through, we did, had a huge project here in the community to separate the storm and sanitary. And, you know, once those get separated, you're right, everything that lands, and you'll hear, this is my report later, anything that lands in the street that gets washed out in the catch basin, that does not get trapped in the sumps. Because in everyone, almost everyone, I can't say everyone, but almost every one of our catch basins, we have a two-foot sump to catch the heavy materials that will settle out. United Water, we contract with them to go through, they back there, I'll clean out those catch basins, the sumps in the catch basins every year, annually. That's part of our program, to get those materials, those heavier materials out of there. The nature of the beast, leaves, plastics, cigarette pots, anything that's lighter than water is going to float. And that's going to get flushed out, out the system. It's, as soon as it can get up high enough, so it floats down the storm sewer and seeks its way to the lake, or the river, or wherever it discharges. And that's going to happen. They do make, they make specially-designed catch basins that basically have a centrifugal trap in them to trap those floating debris. The ones I have seen are very expensive. They're probably about the size of the council desk up here, council seating area. And if you can imagine, you know, four of those at every intersection where we've got a catch basin, they're very cost prohibitive. I know there was some demonstration ones installed in northern Michigan not too long ago. I was reading an article about it, they put some of those in. But they're very expensive and very difficult with a lot of underground facilities and to install something of that size. Our street sweeping, we sweep our streets, you know, much more often than most other communities. We have the two sweep... We have, we have the two sweepers out in the spring, get most, get as much of the debris as we can. We have both of them out in the fall. In the summer, we run one sweeper every day, trying to keep that debris off the streets. That's another pollution prevention technique that we use. Cleaning the catch basins, pollution prevention. We start talking about the beach, and again, kind of self-telling by the reporting here, but we've been working with District Health Department on the floor. And their, their concerns with the debris, the black gunk, for lack of a better term, highly technical term, at the shoreline. And have actually had some conversations. And they put some contact with a company from downstate that specializes in beach remediation plans. And we've actually had a meeting scheduled, without an informational meeting, just to talk with them, see what, what options are for later this month. So they will be in town. Greg will be back. Greg, I've got it, so for Greg, Mike, and myself to sit in on that meeting and at least ask questions of them. And this, the funding, the Great Lakes Initiative money, it didn't materialize this year. And that's one of the things that both District Health Department on the floor and this person I've been dealing with, it didn't materialize. Basically, what you, you need to have some type of a remediation plan in place to be able to access those. So, that, that's kind of where we're headed with this thing. You know, we've tried, Michael's discussed it, we've tried different techniques in the past. And it's, um, it's a never-ending supply of that material that keeps showing up there. You can clean it up one day, just above guaranteed, it's going to be back in the next few days. And the rest will get worse until we clean it up again.
Well, I, I think the focus shouldn't necessarily, and this is my personal opinion, shouldn't necessarily be focused so much on the cleanup, but obviously where it's coming from. I had a couple of questions while you were talking, just specifically for what you were talking about. As far as the sewage treatment plant, do you have like an estimated capacity percentage that we're commonly running on, that the, that the plant-
Just, just to elaborate on some of the things that Rich said, back in the 70s, when the plant was built by EPA, the secondary part of the plant was built by EPA, they required that the city go through a separation process because wastewater treatment is a biological, physical, and chemical process. And it works best when you don't see huge swings in flows of water coming through. And that's what rainfall against, if you can triple and quadruple the volume of water coming through the treatment plant, what happens then is you lose all of your biological treatment out to the river. So EPA actually said, you must separate your system. They paid money for the city to separate their systems. The other advantage of the separated system is you don't have the direct contact, each home in town, to the combined sewer system, where every time you have a rainfall event, basements become treatment tanks. The sewer's backed up into the basement. So, you really have to have a separated system in order to protect the health of the general public and the community. You know, the material that you see during a rainfall event, it's coming right from the road. It's not coming from inside the main, it's not coming from the catch basin, because, you know, those catch basins are cleaned, like Rich says, annually. And there is an EPA requirement for large communities to have a stormwater permit. And they try to take care of the biggest communities first, like Detroit and all the suburban areas in Detroit area, because you get your biggest bang for your buck in those areas. And they tend to have more money to invest in storm sewer. We're doing all the practices that they do. We clean the catch basins, we clean the sewer mains, we clean the streets periodically. We do as much as we can to, to be proactive and remove those materials so they don't get into the surface water when you get those torrential rains. But I can tell you, you know, if we had, if we had a combined system on July 27th, I know that date because my daughter got married on July 27th, and it was raining downstate and it was raining here. And there was so much water that got into the storm sewer system that it actually blew the handle covers off of some of the storm drains in town. Those covers weigh 100 pounds. That's, that's an awful lot of, of pressure to be able to lift that off. And in situations like that, where you have a rainfall event, that's a 100-year event, I mean, there's not, there's not a lot you can do about it.
And all of that exits, all of that storm drain exits in how many, how many areas?
There are two major ones on the lake. There's one down by Michikewas, and there's one at Blair Street. Those are two major ones on the lake. And then there are a number that, that go into the river.
Okay.
Might explain why Thompson Beach is cleaner.
Right. I mean, and, and it's an issue. How is it treatable, rather than treatable in separate areas throughout the city and throughout intersections and whatnot, is it treatable at the, at the exits themselves? Is there something that we can do to filter that economically?
You have to have a tremendously huge lagoon system, like Flint and Saginaw, they have systems that are built underneath huge parks where the water goes into them, they're called retention basins. They have to have enough volume in order to take all that water that's coming in from a major event and allow the materials to settle out or to be collected in some kind of a flotation place. Is there some type of-
You can, you can do it, yeah. You can do it, but it's going to cost you a fortune.
Is there some type of filtration process that you can put on there? You can, you're going to take out, I mean, you can take out the sticks and some of that stuff, but you're, you're not going to be able, because to take very much out, in short order, those are going to plug full. And, I mean, within our treatment system, we have, we have a revolving cleaning, you know, rate system because of the debris that comes in just through our sanitary. And that's a constant, constant process. You'd be looking at something very similar. I'm not saying it's not impossible. Anything is possible. It's the cash and the technology.
All right, so I got it. First, I think it makes sense that they need to be separated. I understand that. But for the better part of six years, people's number one complaint to me is that stuff on the beaches. Say, and I've had a lot of good people give me a lot of different answers. You know, I think we could look into it a little further, but it certainly makes sense, okay, what he's talking about, especially when you look at some beaches are worse than others. The point is, if it's taken this long to figure it out, I think we absolutely positively have to at least look into how to fix it. And if it's a huge price tag, then we'll worry about that later. But I don't care if it's a lagoon, if it's a filter, if you hire a leper con to stand outside that damn thing, I don't care. I mean, this is something that's been a blight on this community, from our, our citizens, from tourists who come in and got to wade through all that stuff. Now, you know, before we would look into that, we need some confirmation to, I won't call it theory, but to what he's presented, but I think at this stage, what it costs should come later. And I would kind of ask you to find if there's, you know, a better filter, if there's a lagoon system. Well, that's not what you have to do, and see if we can't make it happen.
From the information that we've been able to collect over the last 10 years, that material is organic. And it's coming from the nat, it's naturally occurring from the lake. It's not, it's not anything that got washed out of the storm sewer.
That's, I want to say that that is, in my discussions, phone discussions with this Annette D'Amelio, who's consulting firm, basically she said they're seeing the same thing in other communities. It is a, it's an algae bloom on the bottom of the lake with the lower levels.
Then how come it only happened? Well, I don't want to get into a big argument about what it is or where it is. We see the cycle of it. Whatever that is, that's coming out of the, that's coming out of the storm drains, I think, needs to be addressed. If it's not what's causing the issues on the beach, if it's completely separated, then we've at least addressed what it's going to cost and what our options are to get the storm drain issues out. If, if, if the other, if this gunk is something completely different, I think we seriously need to know what that is. We have, you know, we're doing, we're spending all this money on our beaches, on our beachfront, on the, you know, and for what? For people to walk down there and if, and I appreciate what you're doing with the beach, and that's coming up here on the next topic, but if you clean it off and we get a rainfall, it's only a matter of days before it's gook again. And just to, just to change the, the, the people's, people have already made the decision that have been down here, that they may or may not come back to take the chance of whether we've just cleaned it or not, because they know what the beach has a potential of looking like. I don't know what it is. I've walked in it and I, I'm not growing anything unusual, so it's not toxic, but, but it's not, it's not something that's pleasant either.
Right. So if we can, if we can somehow, if you don't, if we, if it's, if it's not proven that the gunk from the video and coming out of the storm drains, if that's not proven to be the gunk that's on our beaches, then let's study them separately. If they are the same, then let's study them together. But I think we should at least address what's coming out of our storm drains and going into the, into the open water, and whether, and what the cost would be to clean that up.
Treat it as two separate.
Right, because we can't, let's say the theory is true, that it's organic and it's coming out of the lake, that we, we obviously can't do much about that unless we put in some type of break wall system, which isn't out of the question either. But let's address the gunk first, I guess, that would be my recommendation, and see if that leads us anywhere.
I have a question. And maybe this is too simplistic, but if it is, is there, do we have some piece of machinery that you could take on the beach and scoop it up and haul it to the landfill and get rid of it? And just, and what is, what is the timeframe that it comes up? Is it weekly? Is it monthly? Is it daily? What is it?
It's about daily. But I don't-
I mean, for it to accumulate in the amount that, on the picture that we saw.
The equipment that we have, two things. The equipment that we have right now does not have the capability to operate in the The, I'm kind of getting to my next mental, but the, the equipment that we're looking at, um, purchasing, um, a new beach cleaner, does have the capability of operating in the water, or in, in the shallow water. What we've been told is you'll probably see about a tenfold increase in cleanup with the new beach cleaner as opposed to our own one. The flipside is that it is a violation of the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality to operate equipment in the water. Well, that's not to say, you can't, we can't get a permit. We could pursue a, we could pursue a permit with that. It's, right now, it's kind of a moot point, because we don't have the equipment. Now, with that said, we have gone down there in the heavy buildup, and we've basically backbladed it up with our loader, pulled it up out of shore as best we could, and then cleaned it up and hauled it away. It lasted for a short time. But it, it was a technique that we used before one of, one of our holidays to try to get as much of that to bring out as we could.
You did that this year?
Yes.
Probably wiser to look into the cause than to keep adding all that labor and that burden to it.
More lost effect.
Mr. Gorski's voice should not be a lonely voice in the wilderness trying to get a grant on Senator Levin. I think the city can add its significant muscle, whatever it is, to that.
What I'd also like to say is that this material's laying there, it's been laying there like they said for the last 60 years. When you have wind shifts, you get the material, once you stop putting more in, it's going to take a long time before it cleans up. I believe that because of our bay being so long, that our water doesn't exit our bay and the material that lays in it doesn't exit our bay and get into the lake destruction. This stuff's, you walk out in the lake and you got a, you got a scum in the bottom. And it's from this stuff. I've lived on that beach now for seven years, and I've watched the cycle. There was four foot of this stuff splashed up on the back of Chris McCoy's rocks, which, I mean, when the water comes, it just piles up. And when it rains, it comes out. And nobody can tell me it's not coming out of the storm sewers. Nobody.
Let's address that, then.
I would say so, yeah, because, you know, even looking at this from an investment standpoint, I mean, we invest a lot of dollars in trying to get people here. And if they come here and the first impression is not the best impression we can make, then we need to at least investigate everything we possibly can do to clean that up, stop where it's coming from, and, and just make that whole area better. So, I agree with that.
I would like that addressed.
Well, I fix it. Why not? Fix it there.
And actually, we've, we've actually already started some of the avenue of that. Steve has been working on the drainage basin, starting to work on the storm drainage basin for that area. We've got the new camera. We're going to, we're going to try to utilize that to see if we can get some video in there and just see what kind of accumulation returns we have in there.
And let's say, then you don't, you don't need our, our direction or sort of-
We will, we will continue to report back. I mean, listen, this meeting at the end of the month is more for an informational meeting. If, if we elect to go forward, we're obviously going to have to go back to council for funding options, whatever, to be able to fund having somebody come in with some expertise that can look at, at options for remediation down there.
Okay. Do you want to, can you come back and just give us a, a lowdown on that meeting, at the next meeting? Because it'll be before the next meeting? Just kind of let us know what transpired?
What I'll do is, I'll, I'll put a quick memo together.
A memo? That's fine. Okay. Thank you, sir. And thank you, Mr. Gorski. And your next is the report on the cleanup of Starlight Beach, ironically, I knew that.
Some of this might sound a little vague. Earlier this year, a presentation was made to the El Pino City Council by Cheryl Mack, sixth grade science, Cheryl Mack, sixth grade science instructor from the Beijing High School. Her presentation centered on Starlight Beach and cleanup efforts by her students at their May 17, 2013 outing. She attached her class with generating concepts, her methods to incorporate to improve the cleanliness of the beach and the quality for the beachgoers. The most prevalent concept identified was the trash that was present on the beach. Cigarette butts appeared to be the predominant item of trash picked up during their visit to the beach and the cleanup efforts. A suggestion was made to make cigarette butt disposal stations available along the beach and walkway and throughout the park to reduce the volumes appearing on the beach. While I am confident that some of these cigarette butts are resulting from beach and parkgoers, I also believe that many of them are washed up on the beach in the water. As anything that gets deposited on our runways has the potential to get washed into the storm sewers, cigarette butts being lighter would get washed into the catch basins, down the storm sewers, and eventually into the lake here. Those that do get washed up on the beach could potentially be picked up by our beach grooming equipment, but more likely due to the debris removal techniques, redistributed throughout the sand. To address the trash and debris on our beach, the city is undertaking several steps as stated. Or as stated, I do not believe that the majority of the cigarette butts are the result of beachgoers. We've looked into purchasing cigarette butt disposal stations within the park and along the walkway. Quality durable smoking receptacles run from $175 to $225 each, depending on style and quantity order. For my adequate numbers, we would need to purchase approximately five of these receptacles. Total cost between $875 and $1,000. Total cost between eight hundred and seventy-five and eight hundred and one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five. These would have to be cleaned and emptied, which could be done by public works personnel as they remove the trash from the other receptacles throughout the park. This would add slightly to the time investment for the park maintenance. Along with the addition of these smoke, smoke receptacles, if deemed necessary, we should also looking at adding trash receptacles along the walkway within Starlight Beach. We presently have them located throughout the park, but not necessarily along the walkway. Installation of additional receptacles may reduce some of the trash on the beach because these would be more accessible to beachgoers. Trash receptacles similar to those installed around the pavilion are approximately four hundred dollars each. To add four trash receptacles along the walkway, it could be sixteen hundred dollars plus the additional ongoing labor to empty and dispose of trash. The other item that we've been looking at is the replacement of our present beach groomer. This unit is twenty-five years old and is slated for replacement in two to three years in our capital improvement plan. Due to the condition and the repairs needed earlier this year, we evaluated our funding within the equipment fund and determined that we could delay another vehicle purchase to move the replacement of this unit up to the current fiscal year. In discussing the replacement of the beach grooming equipment with the sales representative, they indicated that the newer machines have a much improved technology for debris removal. The sales representative indicated that we could achieve seven to, a seven to tenfold increase in debris removal without removing as much sand as our present machine does. During this same time, I began working with Brittany Miller, beach monitor and environmental sanitary in the District Health Department Number Four. She's indicated that they, there may be grant funding opportunities available. And the following excerpt is from an email sent by Brittany Miller to myself, and it deals with the Great Lakes, um, funding, the Great Lakes Initiative. Basically, I've spoken with Shannon Briggs of the DEQ and there will be a grant opportunity coming up. Starlight is currently on the thirty-three oh three D list, which means it lies as a bad beach in Michigan. This just means in two years that this survey has been conducted, it had more accidents, incidences, I think is what you could say, than the maximum level for a good beach, whatever that number was for those years. This works for us because I will create a remediation plan for Starlight and Alpena beaches and the groomer will be included. Then I can work with you to write a grant application for the beach groomer once the location to that grant money is disclosed. State knows that the money is going to become available, so I need to work on this remediation plan in the meantime. This could mean that we could also get money from the GLRI to help the storm drain outfall at Starlight and Blair. Maybe this would help bring down some of that brown bug. Shannon has recommended me to a beach contractor to have her come and look at what kind of remediation we can do on what kind of funding. You and I need to really establish what the city of Alpena would like to improve, like to do to improve the beaches. I know that Starlight isn't getting used to its full potential because of all that muck. I hate to see that happen with the new pavilion and the bathrooms. Whatever I can do to help the city out, I'd like to make that effort this year. And then I continue to achieve the remediation plan as mentioned in her email. She suggested that I contact Annette Di Maria of Environmental Consultant Technology Incorporated, who have worked, who they have worked in the past. I've spoken with Annette and will continue to work with her to determine the best available route for development of a remediation plan for the beaches. And a meeting has been scheduled with her firm for September twenty-seventh to discuss options on that.
Holy God.
Are you good at tying all these together, by the way?
So.
It's ritual.
So the, um, the, the email, the email excerpt that you just read from Brittany Miller is, wasn't long enough ago to, that we have missed any opportunity for grants? This is all really recent? I lost the timeline there a little bit.
It was, um, I want to say late August because it was right before she came and met with us and that funding, um, she indicated that funding was not, did not come through and that we would really need to have that remediation plan in place before we could apply for that funding.
Okay. And do you need any other resources to, do they need people or anything to do that?
I think that's why we need to meet with these folks and see what is involved in developing our remediation plan and then we can, we can go from there. Right now, you know, I, I mean, we're all going in eight different directions.
That's what I'm afraid of, yeah.
Yeah. And that's why I think we need to have somebody who's familiar with this, who's done it before, knows what they're doing, and at least talk to them. I'm not saying we're going to go out and hire those folks, but at least we can talk to them and get some traction on where we should be headed.
Okay. That makes sense to me.
Yep.
Do they need any action on that one either? Does anybody have any further discussion on that? Kind of, if you want to get moving along a little bit?
It would be nice to get our arms around the approximate cost. It would be nice to get our arm around the approximate cost to, I know you'll do that, but we just feel like we're just out there wondering what to do. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, and if you can keep us abreast, because it just seems like the beach thing kind of comes and then it goes and it disappears for two or three years, so if you can just keep us right on that something is getting done and something is, uh, something's being addressed at least, or we know where we're at, so I appreciate if you kind of keep us going on that. Thank you. Now we're, you're all set? Now we're up to our contract modifications?
And that's rich.
And that's you as well.
Um, MacArthur Construction holds the current contract for improvements to Lake Street and was significantly lower than the second lowest bidder on the project. The contract amount for Lake Street was two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars, with the as constructed cost of two hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven sixty, or fourteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars, forty cents lower than the as bid price. This will constitute contract modification number one. What we did, basically what that's called is a balancing recommendation, balancing contract mod. Where we take and translate what was bid to what was actually built and balance the contract out to what was paid to the contractor. Basically, we finished up just under fifteen thousand dollars cheaper on that project than what it was bid for. The city has also, or also utilized MacArthur Construction to facilitate the repairs needed at the intersection of Fifth Avenue and Ripley Boulevard. As the extent of the work needed, materials to be replaced and repaving needed was not able to be estimated prior to construction. We could not accurately prepare a contract modification prior to having the work performed. Utilizing as many of the unit cost items from the Lake Street project, the total cost to perform the repairs at Fifth Avenue and Ripley Boulevard was sixty thousand, seventy-seven dollars, eighty-two cents. These include the cost from MacArthur of thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars, twenty-two cents, and the cost from Goodrich for the paving of twenty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty cents. As stated, as many unit prices as were applicable were utilized from the Lake Street project and extended over to this work, and that did include the asphalt unit price from Lake Street was honored, um, on that resurfacing project. This shall constitute contract modification number two. And this was an unusual situation, the fact that we couldn't, we weren't sure what we were going to get into. Last winter, late last winter, um, city forces went in there and we did a repair on the sanitary and the wash lane in there. When we did that repair, we identified that the pipe going all the way across the intersection was pretty much junk and needed to be replaced. Worked through the DEQ permitting process to get authorization to do that, but we had a number of different connections, storm sewers, et cetera. We had some blind connections that we weren't sure where they came in and sanitary connections that came in there, so we couldn't really estimate what it was. So we utilized MacArthur Construction and to have the work performed. That's why we're coming to you after the fact for the contract mod, uh, we have those prices in place. The third contract modification is to complete the sewer repair work at Lockwood Street between Eleventh Avenue and Twelfth Avenue. The city started this work last winter as an emergency repair and replaced the pipe to the first manhole about mid-block. To complete this sewer replacement, we will need to replace the balance of the pipe within this block. We have prepared a cost estimate for this work and have received authorization from Michigan Department of Environmental Quality for the work to be performed. The estimated cost for this work is thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. It is my recommendation as city engineer that city council authorize this contract modification number two and number three to the Lake Street project contract in the amount of ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars, eighty-two cents. This includes the Fifth Avenue and Ripley Boulevard construction at sixty thousand, seventy-seven dollars, eighty-two cents, and the proposed Lockwood Street construction at thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. Funding was established in the sewer and water fund for these projects and repairs.
I had a brief conversation earlier to kind of catch me up on how that works, so if anybody has any questions for Rich or?
I approve. I don't approve anything. I move we approve the contract modifications as presented.
So. Wallagro?
Hi.
Island?
Yes.
Yelson?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Rich. Last thing on the agenda is, uh, is Don Gilman on our rental inspection presentation?
Sure. The idea and discussion of inspecting residential rental properties began sometime in late nineteen, nineteen ninety-eight due to concerns of some city council members, property owners, tenants, and tenant advocates. The first official meeting of the rental housing inspection committee was on April twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety-nine. The Alpena Landlords Association was represented by Joe Rulo, Jim Thompson, and Brett Dickey, who were landlords. The city had Thad Taylor, Public Safety Director Greg Sundin, the city planner, and Mike O'Reilly, who was the building official then. Tenants were represented by Mary Pat Leonard and Sandra Lewis, who worked for various social service agencies, and homeowners were represented by Sally Lindsey and Hattie Shuffler. The discussion at the first meeting set the purpose and guidelines in regard to the city council directive, specific issues to be addressed such as landlord registration and forced inspections, a history of past inspections based on complaints and tenant landlord relations. I replaced Mike Riley on the committee in June of two thousand when I became the building official. The rental housing committee continued with monthly meetings and eventually agreed on a rental registration process, the form to be used, and a timeline for landlords to get their properties registered with the city with Alpena Beach that would end on January thirty-first, two thousand and one. The rental registration ordinance, zero zero three oh five, went into effect October second, two thousand. Concurrently, when the registration process was being worked out, city staff met with Alpena Landlords Association, a representative of the Michigan Landlords Association, Sally Lindsey, Mary Pat Leonard, and Nemco, who are northeast Michigan council governments, to work out a plan for implementation of a monitored self-regulation plan. The plan included a questionnaire for new and exa, well, I might as well explain, the monitored self-regulation plan was the landlord's idea to do it theirself and prove that they were doing. So that plan included a questionnaire for new and existing tenants, a form to track landlord response times when dealing with the, with rental unit maintenance issues, and a scoring system based on severity of the issue and time taken to get it repaired. City council contracted with Nemco for a twelve-month period to track the landlord's self-regulation plan and any complaints received by myself, the building official, for a statistical comparison for six thousand, nine hundred dollars in July of two thousand. The monitored self-regulation plan began on February first, two thousand and one, and the results were to be reported to city council as conclusion in February of two thousand and two. The first year resulted in fifteen complaints to the building official by tenants and nothing was reported to Nemco by the Landlords Association. Most of the complaints that I responded to were serious complaints such as no heat, no hot water, sewer problems, and electrical issues. The self-regulation plan was extended for six months by city council to give the landlords a second chance, but council did not hire Nemco to compile the statistics. The landlords would track the results and report back to the council. The first nine months of two thousand and two, I handled twenty-six complaints. Eighteen required immediate detention for serious structural, electrical, and plumbing violations. One duplex was condemned and another was shut down for six days until operable toilets were installed and inspected by the state of Michigan. The final report to city council was presented on October sixteenth, two thousand and two. The report was very detailed and included cost analysis, program benefits, guidelines, criteria for compliance, personnel requirements, and appeals process for mandatory rental inspection ordinance. So the idea of self-regulation went out the window at that time. The landlords did not present any document, documentation at the meeting as previously directed by council. Based on the information provided in the report, we were directed by council to have a rental inspection program ready for adoption by January two thousand and three. Mandatory rental inspection ordinance, zero three 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 two, was adopted on January twentieth, two thousand and three, and the first rental inspections were conducted on August eighteenth of two thousand. Does anybody on council have any questions at this time about that section? Number of rental units. Today, we have one thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight registered rental units in the city that are owned by four hundred and forty-six different landlords. In two thousand and three, when the program first started, we had one thousand, five hundred and sixty-two registered rental units owned by three hundred and fifty-seven landlords. This shows a trend of more landlords owning fewer units than in two thousand and three, which is resulting in better maintenance of rental units as landlords are better able to manage fewer units. It also shows a trend of an increasing amount of single-family residents being converted to rental units in light of current economic times. Benefits of a rental inspection program. The rental inspection program has resulted in many benefits, not only to landlords and tenants, but to the community as a whole. For landlords, many have commented throughout the years of the program's existence that it has leveled the playing field. Many of the cheaper, dilapidated rental units that some unresponsive landlords used to own have either been sold to homeowners and been repaired, or sold to other landlords who were willing to bring them up to a higher safety standard. The city has applied for grants through MISHDA to rehab existing rental units throughout the city. This has benefited landlords by financial assistance of a fifteen thousand dollar forgivable grant per unit in exchange for keeping rents within MISHDA guidelines for five years after the work is completed. They have to pay a minimum twenty-five percent match. Low-income tenants have the benefit of renting safe, clean, and affordable rental units. Through the grant process, we have helped rehabilitate about eighty units. The program has been, this, that program has been in place since two thousand and one. We also have a downtown rental development program through MISHDA. This program takes underutilized areas on second floors of buildings in the ZDA and converts them into apartments. That program was started as a twenty-five thousand dollar grant and has since grown to a thirty-five thousand dollar grant per unit. The grant is forgivable after five years and requires the same minimum twenty-five percent match by the landlord. These units may be rented to either low or medium income tenants. If two units are done in one location, the landlord may charge market rate rent for one of the units. When the current grant is completed at the end of the year, we'll have created twenty-one apartments in the downtown area. That sense of program inception. These two grants have brought in almost two million dollars of grant money to landlords. It also represents about three million dollars in construction spend. The units created downtown and help the local business in the area by creating activity and spending in the downtown stores and restaurants. Having the mandatory rental inspection program helps increase the chances of getting these MISHDA grants. MISHDA knows the money is spent, the units will have inspections for years to come and thereby protecting their investments. Tenants also benefit by knowing the city is serious about having safe, clean, and sanitary rentals within the city limits, and their complaints will be responded to. Property owners in the neighborhoods benefit from the inspection program due to the fact rental housing stock is being kept to a higher standard than in the past. This helps improve the looks of the neighborhoods and helps increase property value. Some of the rehabs were conducted on several houses in the same neighborhood by charging the grant to, to obtain a quicker visual investment. There's two separate ordinance involving residential rental properties, zero zero, uh, three oh five, which is, deals with rental registration, and zero three 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 two, which is the actual mandatory rental inspection ordinance. The rental registration ordinance requires all rental properties within the city limits be registered with the city within thirty days of ownership or deciding to begin renting the property. Registration is free and asks for the owner's name, address, and phone number. Owners that live more than twenty miles from the city limits would also ask for a local agent or contact information in the event we need to contact them about a unit for an emergency or something of that nature. The mandatory rental inspection- The mandatory rental inspection ordinance requires that every residential rental unit in the city be inspected at least once every three years. The inspection criteria are per the current edition of the International Property Maintenance Code and the HUD Housing Quality Standards. It also requires an inspection based on a complaint of a tenant or the landlord if it's between the normal three-year mandatory inspections. It also directs the building official to prepare a standardized inspection checklist that is available to the landlords prior to the inspection. Checklist is available free of charge in the building department and on the city website. I have included the latest version, July twenty thirteen, in your package. Of course, when the rental inspection ordinance was first implemented, I divided the city into three geographic sections and divided each of those into three more sections. This allowed us to inspect one-third of the units in all areas of the city in the first year and not be subject to charges. Complaint of that by a landlord. It also split the inspections up for the following two years of the program. We also allowed any landlord to have all of their rental units in one geographic location to have been spread out over three years of the program so as to ease any financial burden on them. Notices were mailed out forty-five days in advance of the inspection day detailing what time the inspection will be conducted, the cost, and what to do if the tenant or landlord can't make the scheduled date. The landlord is required to notify the tenants and get their permission for us to enter the premises to do the inspection. If the unit is vacant, we only need the landlord's permission to do the inspection. If permission is not granted, we seek an administrative search warrant to allow us to perform the inspections from the court. We have only had to do this twice in the past. The inspection is conducted in accordance with the inspection criteria established by the International Property Maintenance Code and the Housing Quality Standards, the basic requirements of which are outlined in the City of Elpina Rental Inspection Criteria. The landlord and/or the tenant are requested to be present during inspection, however it's not mandatory as long as we gain entry into the unit. Once the inspection is completed, the landlord is notified by letter that outlines any deficiencies that were found, amount of time to correct them, and the date and time of the reinspection. Again, the landlord is required to notify the tenants of the date and time of the reinspection. For most violations, they're given thirty days to correct them. Some violations may be required to be corrected within twenty-four hours. Examples of a twenty-four correction would be no heat in the middle of winter, no hot water, sewer backup in the basement, interoperable smoke lines, or some serious electrical issues. Once violations are corrected and inspected, a certificate of compliance is issued to the landlord for each rental unit. In some cases, the unit may be vacant but have several violations. In these instances, we let the landlord take as long as they want to repair them, as long as repairs are finished and inspected prior to occupancy. A tenant or landlord that disagrees with the results of an inspection may appeal to the Housing Board of Appeals. To date, we have had one appeal. Fees. Registration of rental units is free. Failure to register a rental unit will result in a late registration fee of fifty dollars. That's if you say that this is a little bit confusing, but that's if you buy a rental unit from somebody else. It's already been registered by the original owner, it's already been inspected, you don't need an inspection, your certificate is good for another use, but you don't give us your new information within thirty days of purchasing that unit, that's a fifty-dollar fine. Failure to register a unit, it can also result in a fee from a hundred and twenty-five to five hundred dollars depending on the circumstances. That's if we find out your rent something on you has never been registered. So, a first-time landlord would be fined a hundred and twenty-five dollars, an existing landlord would be fined two hundred and fifty dollars, and a second violation would result in a fine of five hundred dollars. The rental inspection fees range from fifty-five dollars a unit for ten or more units at the same time at the same location, sixty dollars for three to ten units at the same time and same location, to sixty-five dollars for one or two units. The first reinspection is included in the initial fee. Failure to pay the inspection fee within ten days after the inspection resulted in additional ten dollars per unit being charged. After ten days, the fee is twenty dollars per unit, and if the fees remain unpaid, they'll be added to the property tax rules. Missed appointments without notice are a hundred and twenty-five dollars adds our reinspections after the second failure. An appeal to an inspection to the Housing Board of Appeals is a twenty-five-dollar fee, which may be directed to be refunded to the applicant by the board as part of their fine. As far as qualifications, both Mike and I are licensed residential builders and have decades of construction experience. I've been registered with the state of Michigan as a building official, building inspector, and planner viewer since two thousand. Mike is registered as a building inspector and a planner viewer since two thousand and three. These registrations with the state require both of us to receive continuing education in five areas to be able to renew them. The five areas are communication, administration, specialty, technical, and planner of your training. Mike and I receive a minimum of forty hours annually through the Northern Michigan Code Officials Association where we are both on the board directly. We also receive an additional fifteen hours of training when we attend the code officials of Michigan string workshops, of which we are members. We do this about every two years. Mike has been certified by the International Code Council and the International Property Maintenance Code through testing conducted by the Michigan Housing -- Michigan Association of Housing Officials and other organizations we belong to. We have both been certified and tested through the Michigan State Housing and Development Authority conducting Housing Quality Standard inspections, or HQS. I've been certified five times, and Mike has been certified twice. Those certifications require testing. They're usually, it's a three-day test. Our certificates are both current. We have both been certified in safe lead paint practices and visual paint assessment. We both currently have the Renovate Right Program certificates from the EPA, and they'll expire in twenty fifteen. We both have the Work Wet Safe Smart Lead Paint Program certificates from HUD. I am also certified by testing through HUD to train people in that program, and to date have trained over two hundred and fifty contractors and landlords. I have four days of training through various organizations and testing to conduct lead paint, clearance examinations, and visual painting. Probably don't have any questions.
Let's maybe go backwards, I guess, from what you presented. I've got a -- I've been asked a few times from different individuals as far as the qualification process goes, specifically the electrical portion of the qualifications for inspecting. Maybe just kind of, maybe just kind of give us a brief example or difference between what you're inspecting and what electrical inspector inspects, and maybe the difference.
I can make it hopefully clear, wide everybody in the room. Any inspector, building official, building inspector, all those types of inspections deal with one thing, Public Act two thirty. That's a state law that I think a landlord tried to recite to you last time he talked for his five minutes. That deals with permit, period. That's the end of it. If you don't have an electrical permit, if you get electrical work done and you pull a permit now through the city, previous to that it would've been through the state of Michigan, the person that inspected that work had to be a registered electrical inspector, just like you build a deck and you have a registered building official or building inspector come and look at that. To enforce the Property Maintenance Code, you do not have to be an electro inspector to plug a device in a wall and see what it tells you. Those inspections, you don't need to be a registered electro inspector. Look at bare wires hanging out of a wall, you don't have to be a registered electro inspector. Any building official, building inspector, or anyone else that the council wants to appoint to do property maintenance inspections can do those inspections. And the authority is derived through the International Property Maintenance Code. The HUD inspections, in order to do those, the HQS, which the book is much bigger, but they are much simpler, that's the floor for safe, portable, decent housing. You'd have to go take a test. You pass the test, you're trained how to plug the test device properly into the outlet and read the lights as come on, you pass the test, you can do it. You don't have to be a registered electro inspector.
And as far as the electrical portion of the inspection, that's that and visible wires and anything physical safety is.
Safety, period, not functional. Safety is outlined in both of those codes.
When Mr. -- when Todd came up, sorry about your last name, Buttersworth, at our previous meeting, he addressed, he addressed the legalities of the city being able to enter their units and just not, maybe on his behalf now that we're discussing it, if you can be a little bit more clearer, or if you need Bill to be a little bit more clear on it.
The city.
Did my dog, my dog, I need to. The city, this was Tesla, the fir -- I told you twice we had to get administrative search warrants. So, the first time we had to do that, it went through courts when Pete Wallace was the city attorney and myself. And it went through, it went all the way through Circuit Court, and either it was heard by the appeals court in Michigan or was determined that they weren't going to listen to it because there was no merit to listen to it. And basically, you have, you heard Mr. Buttersworth supporting the Constitution, and you do have a right. Your home is your castle. And I agree with that, you know, I'm a military veteran, and I agree with that a hundred percent. The way ordinance was initially written, if we came to do the inspection and you didn't let us in, we wrote a ticket. And that's what happened the first time that happened. And the next day, I tore up the ticket and went and got administrative search warrant, which we were granted. And we were granted the warrant different than a police officer, you know, going to bust somebody for pot because somebody told me they suspected somebody's got something illegal in their house. So, they go get a search warrant to go look for something in particular. We're going to get a search warrant to look for safety violations that we have no idea if there's any in there or not. So, I mean, sometimes you might be able to tell from looking at the outside, but generally, if like the electrical ground isn't properly hooked up, you can't tell that by looking at the outside. So, we had to go get a warrant. We're granted that warrant not because the judge or the magistrate, whoever's giving it to us, thinks there's something wrong. We're given that warrant for one reason, because the elected body in the jurisdiction in which we serve passed an ordinance saying you are going to do this every three years. That's what makes that legal, the fact that we have the ordinance. So, those kind of administrative search warrants you get to do to perform an administrative function, in this case, and inspection, not knowing if there's something wrong or not, but because of time for you to go take a look. I mean, I'll bet we're a bit off the mark this year. And Billy, you can shine.
Administrative search warrants an exception to the general Fourth Amendment requirement of probable cause for a search warrant. Administrative warrants do not look for criminal violations. They're based on the police power that all states have for public health, safety, and welfare. So, it's a safety issue. It's, in my own home, I can have as many violations as I want, okay? Because the law says if I own my house and I let it burn down because I didn't take care of it, am I going to kill myself? That's my problem, okay? If I rent a house to a third party, we're required to register to the registration ordinance, and it's got to pass an inspection. When I rent it to somebody else, I can't give up their public safety, they have their public safety. So, administrative search warrant is just to make sure that there aren't safety violations. We don't go in to search somebody's house for pot, we don't go in looking for guns, we don't go in looking for stolen property, we don't go in looking for proof of IRS tax violations. So, we're not in there trying to get somebody in trouble or trying to investigate a crime. We're not going in on behalf of a police agency. We're going in to conduct inspection to make sure that the public health, safety, and welfare of the individual residing in that home is protected. And it's an exception to the general requirement under the Fourth Amendment. It's not a criminal search warrant.
And how does that, if you say, you took yourself for an example, so let's say, how does that tenant have the state, how does he end up have the same rights as you do as far as allowing someone into his dwelling? He gives up that when he rents from any city, not just Elpina, because we're not the only ones in the state that have this inspection process, but he gives up that right that we do as personal landowners in our own home? When you're a renter here, you, not that you've had that many, that have, I've only had two, but just to be clear, they, that they waive that in some way? Or they never have it unless they own their own home?
They don't have the, they don't have the right to the protection of the Fourth Amendment under that scenario because you're not looking for violations of criminal law that the tenant may have conducted. You're looking for inspection of the unit. So, we're there to inspect the unit. We're not there to search Tom Smith or Bill Pfeiffer or Don Gilman. We're there to search the unit to make sure the unit's in compliance with the International Property Maintenance Code, okay, for any potential violation. And when we cite the violation, you know, that may ultimately end up in a criminal charge if the landlord doesn't fix the unit. And that's the penalty that's been laid out in the validly adopted ordinance. But we're not there searching for crimes, we're there searching for public health, safety, and welfare. And once again, administrative search warrant is an exception to the general warrant requirement, just like there are other exceptions. There's a plain view exception, there's a school exception. You know, we allow school administrators to go get in a kid's locker and make sure there's not a gun in there. I mean, that's so that they don't pull a gun out and shoot the other kid. So, there's different warrant requirements that have been lessened or exceptions have been carved out. So, when the Fourth Amendment was enacted two hundred and some years ago, it was so the king couldn't come kick your door and pull you out of your house and throw you in jail or kill you. That's not what an administrative search warrant is. So, you know, the tenant doesn't give up their right because the tenant in that situation But what we're searching is the residence, the unit. We're not searching the tenant.
Okay. So, we don't need the landlord's permission to go in and do a rented unit? We need the tenant's permission because the time he rents it becomes his castle. And so, the two times we had to get search warrants, it didn't matter if the landlord said, "I don't want you." Usually what would happen is the tenant's going to go along with the landlord, "Hey, I don't want you." But we've had times before when we were told that, and I would go talk to them and say, "Look, you know, it's up to you, but we are going to get a warrant. We are going to come back at a time that's convenient to us and not necessarily to you. And we're going to bring a couple cops with us because we have to." And sometimes, four or five times other than two times, they decide, "Well, I'd rather have my inspection in my convenience."
Okay. And I'm just going to, I'm going to use an exception just because I was speaking on a question on behalf of Todd, and I just don't want this to get into too much of a back and forth, but I'm going to give you an opportunity to just, if you, if it's a follow-up on what we were discussing.
This is a question. You said you own your home, and you got the deed in your house. The tenant had the lease in their name, the deed is in your name. Don't pay your taxes for three years, see what happens, you'll be out. Technically, you're just renting, just like the tenant. If you don't pay your rent in thirty days, or sixty days, or ninety days, we get an eviction notice. Don't pay your taxes for three years and see how long you stay in your home. You are just a renter also. And that's all the point, and that's the only point I want to make. We are all renting. Just because the deed is in your name doesn't mean it is yours, okay? And you're right, once the tenant signs the lease, it is his, I have no business going in there, and neither do you, or you, or you, or you, or you, unless that tenant gives you permission.
And him using the school where there's kids involved, comparing that to tenant landlord is not even an even comparison.
Okay.
Allowing the principal to go in and search for a child, what a terrible thing for a lawyer to say.
Okay, well, we're not going to make, we're not going to tolerate too much fashion here on someone's predicament.
It's supposed to be a professional.
It's an interesting perspective on both parties. So, back to where we were, I timed out on my machine, so it doesn't happen very often, but obviously, we've been here long ago, it's useless, it's just black now. So, I did, I did want to, my sole purpose on this was just mainly because, no, thank you. We're all very, most of us up here are very new. I'm not so sure that any of us were on board when this was, when this was brought up, when this, when the ordinance was put into effect. It's my understanding that under the most, for the most part, it has been beneficial to all parties. I wanted to address what, and not only Todd, Todd wasn't the only person that's approached me in the last couple of weeks about the inspection process. So, I just wanted to, my main purpose was to get it out there, have, it was a great explanation to how it was developed, what it entails now. I did want to delve into a little bit as far as the certification process, you put that in here, the legalities. Some of them are even a little bit confusing to me as far as whose home is whose home. And that, that's to be judged on an individual basis by an individual judge. If somebody wants to challenge the fact that we're coming into a renter's home, you have, you have. you have, you have the flag behind you to be able to go and do that. How the judge perceives that, it could actually change on a daily basis, as far as I know, but, uh, but you have that legal right. But I, I think the program works well. That was my main focus today, was to address it, um, and put it out there, so if anybody had any other questions, um, about the process. It, it's, it, the difficult part for me, I guess, as far as the inspection process is the same thing we're, we're going to go through with the, with the truck route process here in the next month or so. The people that are enforcing it, it's not always completely black and completely white. There's an area there that's going to be questionable until, till the end of time as to what's safe, what looks good, wha, what's the difference between, um, you know, chipped paint on this person's house and, and, and not so chipped paint on that person's house? It's a perspective, it's difficult. I do, I would like to give you and Mike any ammunition that you need, pardon that term, I guess, but to, to, to be able to enforce this more properly, if you feel that some of the, uh, some of the ordinance needs to be adjusted by any means, um, to make it a little bit more black and white and enforceable, then I would expect a proposal.
We've done that, that, just to make another point, that it doesn't have anything to do with rental inspection, but had to do with me being a building official in the City of Elpina. Being a building official is something that, you know, you appointed me and the state anointed me, okay? So, the International Property Maintenance Code applies to every single building, whether it's an apartment building, schools, of course, are exempt because they're run by the state, state buildings aren't in it, but, or federal, but, all the houses, everything. And I, to get an administrative search warrant to go into your house, Mayor, for an example, if I am driving by and I look and I see half of your chimney is gone, and it's in your backyard, and the bricks are down below, you're, I'm going to come up and knock on your door, and I'm going to ask you if I can go check out what happened to your chimney, and you can say, "Get off my porch, and I'll be back in two hours with an administrative search warrant based on what I saw driving by in relationship to that building." So, it applies to, to, um, single families, e, even though they're not out to rent as far as safety to the general public, we don't want the chimney to fall and hit somebody that's stealing the battery out of your car in the backyard. So, it's not just to be looked at as, we're, we're just picking on tenants. And the city didn't adopt the International Property Maintenance Code in order to have rental inspection. The city has always had a property maintenance code, for as long as I can remember. It used to be the bulk of property maintenance code. The city has had a building department probably thirty years longer than the state of Michigan has had a building department. They didn't even start until like 1975. You guys have been doing it since the 1940s. So, the program's pretty well-ground, we've got pretty good, uh, handle on how things are going.
It's good for you, because you got a job, it's good for us.
Well, you see, um.
I, I'd like to make a comment, I was here. Um, so, on the plan commission, and remember the meeting, if you, if you were participating, and somebody was, somebody, some of these folks were at, at brand-new Lincoln School, we all came together, and honestly, I was so nervous before that meeting, I, and it was one of my first ginormous meetings being on the plan commission. I was so nervous before that meeting, because there was not one happy face in the room, and I thought, "This cannot end well." But it did, at least it ended that night. And we've come forward, and we've worked together, and it's, we've made it work, and it has improved tremendously, because of landlords, because of the renters, because of the city. And we can do this.
Right.
We can do this. We did it.
Right.
We can do this.
Oh, I know we can, impossible, there, you know, there's no doubt about it, you know, there's some smart people in this council, and some smart people in this room, and some smart people in this city, so, I know, anything can be accomplished.
I just want what's fair for the tenant to be the same, have the same rights as you and the mayor and Don Gilman. Nobody's going into Don's house, and believe me, nobody's going into your house.
Okay. Okay, so, um, so, I don't know, I, I don't particularly know how to wrap up, I certainly appreciate what you've brought to us, I appreciate the, the landlords that, that came. Um, I, I purposely put that out there, uh, just to, just to get as much input as possible for the project that's ongoing. If you have anything that can make it easier for both sides, but the plan seems to be going well, um, I certainly didn't want, I didn't present it to take any really specific action at all. Just, it's been presented to, to myself and obviously to you.
And we do, yeah, and, I mean, there are things in the works, uh, looking at ways reward landlords that don't have, is, you know, you might go to some rental units and there are just a couple little things every time, and maybe there's a way to lengthen the amount of time on the inspection process, or maybe they'd be refunded a portion of the, uh, you know, what they paid for the rental inspection to begin with, just the hard part becomes, because it always goes back to fairness, and how do you prove you were fair here, fair there, you know, so, it's, Greg and I have been working with, with Mike Kielczewski and trying to come up with something that's beneficial to everybody. Um, the reality of it is, the program does not pay for itself. Not, not many things do, but the service has always been felt and is worth it for the improvement. You know, that, that everything goes along with the neighborhood grants and all that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Whatever you're doing.
You are watching All About Elpina.